Twenty twenty-five meetings in the Castle Planning Zone, Commissioner Billard. First item of business, please, roll call.
Gordon Turner.
Present.
Uh, Elizabeth Johnson, Will Wright.
Here.
Keith Craigform.
Here.
Amy Fordy.
Here.
Item number two is to consider approval of the agenda. I have a motion, second, to approve the agenda as presented on favor of six thousand five hundred and thirty. Be unanimously approved. Item three is to consider approval of the minutes from our August twenty-five, two thousand point five meetings on the separate table of twenty-nine, twenty-two point five meeting that was no forum, none of them held. Which is why they reviewed August point fifth, the hang-on time meeting, and that's three thirty. I have a motion to approve agenda, or the minutes as presented, by the second. Second, all favors, and above the first thing. Be unanimously approved. Item four is report of city councils to state who's on planning commission recommendations, if Elias moving.
Yeah, um. Item seven A and E will continue for Riverview Villages by the applicant, the resident of North, uh, third and city council. Item seven C was, uh, discussion of possible action of the approval of the final flat in Lakeview, section two. That was approved by council. Item seven D was a oil and gas permit for a new pad side and a new well for the racer. Located on, uh, northwest twenty-fourth street. That was approved. Uh, seven F was a future land use and a companion, seven G, for the rezoning and land use for, um, northeast thirty-fourth street. The P U D for the sand mining and, uh, concrete asphalt batch plant. And then item eight was a deviation of the facade for, um, thirty-four fifty-five Del Rex avenue was approved by council. Those were all items.
Do you have any questions on that? Item five is continuous request.
Eighteen, ninety-one.
Item nine requesting to continue us to make a motion that we approve the continuous of the applicant's request for items eight and nine under donkey. I have a motion. Second, I have a motion, second, all favors, six thousand five hundred and thirty, be unanimously approved. Item six is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to be heard for the planning commission on items that are not on our agenda. Is there anyone that wants to be heard on that or his mouth on that? Seeing none, proceed. Item seven, lots with deed of hurdles. With, um, no enterprise with, uh, twang one, northwestern second street. Um, very good, true. That's a lot besides the, uh, urge for the women.
No, that is, uh, um.
That's the whole south end.
This should have been, oh, that should say southeast, yeah, southeast, thirty-nine, that's right, southeast. Sorry.
Southeast?
Southeast, so that was, um. Olivia Snow had brought that property, who's on Ellis, and then she wanted to keep that east portion, and so they just a lot of it.
Right, I'm sorry.
That's my fault.
Item A is public, well, I'm sorry, that's continued. No, that, I'm just a report. Item ten is a public hearing to consider an application for rezoning from I R restricted light manufacturing and warehouse district to P R D landing development, for Atkins and Atkins Land Development LLC. Mars Landing title located in the northeast quarter of section ten, township eight north, and through the west of Mandan, Veridian, and Plain County, Oklahoma. Property address is highway nine and South Harve Road, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is R twenty twenty-five dash zero one two.
It was continued through the last.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, this application, Janey Greenlee with the Newcastle Planning Department. This application is for, uh, request for rezoning from I R restricted light manufacturing and warehousing district to A general agriculture district. The HUD, land unit development for the Mars Landing. Owner and developer is Ashton, Ashton Land Development LLC, Scott and Brett Ashton. The engineer is small arrow, engineering, and John, John Bolt is the engineer. This is generally located on the, uh, on State Highway nine and South Harvey, on the north side of, uh, State Highway nine, across from the Riverway Casino. Um, up here on the left-hand side of the screen is an aerial of the forty, approximately forty-eight point five nine acres. That they will become, the, the next item is the preliminary plat for this rezoning. Um, the surrounding zoning is a mix of agriculture, mostly industrial, I R, and some I M one, and also some heavy industrial to the north on southeast fortieth. The current, each, uh, Newcastle twenty forty contents of plans and future land use map designated both of these parcels as general commercial, and therefore a land use amendment is not required for this project. So the, the basics of this HUD is that blocks one and two contain eighteen lots, and it's going to be zoned under the C P two general commercial district for the underlying zoning, with the allowance of, um, bars and cigar lounges, as well as auto-related services excluding wrecker and salvage yard. Uh, block three with two lots will, uh, be designated under the heavy industrial district with allowance for concrete asphalt batch plant, utility storage yard, and staging areas for portable offices. In the P U D, they have outlined landscape requirements, um, with a, uh, utilizing an Oklahoma proven tree list, tree and plant list, um, masonry and architectural design requirements. For the C P two portion, they're going to be at a hundred percent masonry on all sides. On the industrial, we'll do the, um, eighty percent on the front facing, uh, street facing, the pod only. Masonry, uh, excuse me, architectural metal will be allowed on the other three elevations that are not front-facing. They've also included exterior lighting requirements for full cutoff fixtures, um, trash, trash and dumpster enclosure, as well as parking requirements, cross-access and shared parking throughout the site, as well as additional sign requirements. They, you know, want full signs on each lot, so they've allowed marked signs at the front of the development, and then, uh, signs on each one of the buildings, just no gross signs, no electronic signs allowed either. That's the basis of the HUD. I'm happy to answer any additional questions regarding the HUD. Um, the applicant is here, and they will go into a presentation further after the preliminary plat. But I'm happy to answer any of the rezoning questions at this point.
On the, uh, block three, block two, is the, the, and I just didn't get it in the code. But is able to provide for, uh, both sides of the building facing the street, since it's a corner lot, meaning eighty percent.
Um, the front, the masonry requirements are going to be hundred percent on the front, not on the side, no, no requirement on the side. Front elevation, excuse me, front elevation, um, will be eighty percent, rainsoil with architectural pant metal panels, twenty percent, side and rear will be hundred percent architectural metal panel.
Other than, there's a name, which is the front?
The front will be facing fortieth. They're not really a corner lot, I can go back. There's another, there's, there's development is, uh, to the east of it, if you look right here on the map.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, so they're not. Yeah.
Is that more, isn't it, with more commercial?
Um, to the east of where, where the, the heavy industrial, here, excuse me. So this will be the heavy industrial area, and this is the commercial area along highway nine. This, there's no access and no connectivity because of a floodplain and the wetland. Yes, so these lots will be the ones where the heavy industrial use will be. Uh, to the east is industrial. There's I M one and light industrial to the east of it. I will add as well is we did not get any protest from any surrounding property owners for this request for the rezoning. Um, you know, this has been a long designated industrial area. As you guys probably know, you can see the Taco Bell and the Brahms being constructed on the front frontage of where this development will be, they're already under construction, they have done a lot, but maintain the zoning to be the I R because, uh, restaurants are allowed in I R in our current zoning. Um, so we did that for economic development and growth.
Um, my question isn't about these, like, whether or not it's, or not, it's more of, uh, there's no sewer in this area.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
So all, yeah, so all the lots currently there's the sewer, and, you know, uh, council, the city manager are working diligently to try to get sewer to this location. Um, there will be a lift station down at highway nine and Harvey, that, um, the city is trying to, like I said, promote economic development, no limit area for development. So it's a really good question. That's why all of these blocks need to have acre minimum for onsite treatment. Um, through the planning process, they will be sending sewer once we have it available at this area. Until then, they're going to have onsite treatment. That's what the Taco Bell and Brahms currently have, is the onsite treatment.
Right.
They all meet the half acre minimum for that, yeah.
I, I saw that in there mildly, uh, and it's not even, they didn't have to be written down or anything, but that, um, if they had a central packaged treatment plant for the development, it might be more, I don't know about cost-effective, but land-effective.
Right.
For their space. Is that or not, or if that was part of any discussion?
We have been, um, in discussions with the Atkins group for almost the last two and a half years about this fight, and I think that they poured every option that was cost-effective and, and beneficial and allowing to make to do the development without without it being cost prohibitive, so that's why they went with, with this, with this design.
Is there any public comment on this application? I have a motion to approve the rezoning of this property to a P U D, all favors, and I've got a second. Be unanimously approved. Item eleven is the discussion of possible action on preliminary plat of Lamar Landing.
Good evening, commissioners, Keith Johnston, I'm the development review coordinator for the planning department. The applicant also has a short presentation following this presentation. The Lamar's Landing is a proposed forty-eight point five nine acre P U D consisting of twenty lots for commercial and industrial use. The P U D is designed to provide a master plan, mixed-use development that integrates retail, commercial, hospitality, service, and then heavy industrial use. Parcel is generally located on the north side of State Highway nine and northwest of South Harvey Street. City of Newcastle staff and the Atkins and Atkins Land Development have been coordinating to advance its projects in twenty twenty-three. This year, the Atkins team has formally submitted multiple sets of preliminary plat documents for the city's review and comment. At this time, all comments have been addressed. Starting with access, Lamar's Landing preliminary plat has three points of access to public streets. Kinderport is a proposed collector class street that connects to State Highway nine and serves as the access, also serves as the access to Brahms and the Taco Bell sites that are presently under construction. Blair Lane is also a proposed collector class street that will connect into South Harvey Street on the east side of the Love's Convenience Store. Site also has access to southeast fortieth street for lots one and two of block three via the South Harvey Street. South, uh, southeast fortieth street is presently a gravel road with heavy industrial traffic along the north frontage of the Lamar's Landing plat. The developer is proposing the following improvements to southeast fortieth street. For the interim, developers shall improve gravel road surface and drainage consistent with an inch and a half crushed rock, four inches deep along the frontage and the width of the road. Developer participation and improvements of southeast fortieth street to city standards will be addressed in a development agreement and determined during the final plat and public improvement stage of the development. For drainage and detention, the drainage will be designed such that runoff from the proposed development will not exceed pre-development flows. Detention, detention will be required for this development in accordance with one fifty-three point zero eight nine. The centrally located common area and wetland will serve as the primary detention and stormwater feature. The proposed development will comply with the current City of Newcastle drainage and detention requirements. A proposed pond is identified and is located within the common area. Maintenance of the wetland and common area will be responsibility of the Property Owners Association. A floodplain development permit has been submitted for the project detailing the proposed improvements to the site. As the proposed lots are developed, each site will be required to provide a floodplain elevation certificate that certifies the finished floor elevations of each building is one foot above the base flood elevation. For sanitary sewer, the developer will be required to design and install a gravity sewer system throughout the development. Although the gravity sewer cannot be connected downstream at this time, it will be in the future. The developer shall coordinate with the city for upsizing the minimum eight-inch gravity lines within the development, which will be determined during the final plat phase. Until gravity sewer is connected, the development will be served by individual septic systems, systems required at the time of building permitting. All proposed lots meet the O D E Q one-half acre requirement for onsite seven. Water for the property is available from an existing sixteen-inch water line that runs along State Highway nine. Individual lots will utilize private water services from a ten-inch water line that will be extended through the site. Block three will be served from an existing eight-inch water main in southeast fortieth street. Regarding parkland dedication requirements, three and a half percent of the acreage must be dedicated as parkland or four hundred dollars per lot fee in lieu of the acreage. For this development, either one point seven acres or eight thousand dollars would be dedicated. The developer is requesting to contribute eight thousand in lieu of the acreage. During the final plat and public improvements phase, the developer will submit engineering designs for the public improvements that will be constructed at the site moment prior to any building permits and lot development. The final plat and public improvements must be approved by city council prior to construction. Planning staff and the city's engineering consultant has reviewed this development with the applicant's signed team, and the applicant has addressed all staff comments regarding this preliminary plat. The applicant is requesting the variance below in order to meet certain city requirements and regulations. To offer him ends approval of this preliminary plat has submitted including the proposed variance. So developer is proposing a variance to one fifty-three point zero eight one C one to use A D S N twelve H D P E pipe for the storm sewer pipe instead of the reinforced concrete pipe. Due to, due to the site's flat topography and location within the floodplain, the developer proposes to encase the H D P E pipe with flowable fill, which is no string concrete, to ensure secure installation. The H D P E pipe size can be smaller in diameter and carry the same flows as the R C P, therefore helping to achieve the minimum pipe grade and coverage requirements. The H D P E pipe shall be installed for the manufacturer's recommendations. The applicant also has a presentation, but I can take questions at this time.
You. Over the, the gravel road improvement.
So, yeah, so for the interim, they're proposing to do inch and a half gravel, crushed rock for the width and frontage of the property. And then ultimately, um, a development agreement will be negotiated at the final plat stage for what the obligation will be for city standards as far as paving and curving there. And typical city standards for, essentially, I don't know.
So the gravel is, with the construction period, or is it, it seems to be able to go on after that, or we won't know?
I'm sorry, one more time?
It seems like, I mean, are we saying the gravel will be through the construction period, or we don't know?
So at this point, we haven't, we don't have the development agreement in place, so that's going to come at the, during the improvement stage, the public improvement stage. But right now, we do know that they will provide interim gravel for the roadways just to provide the interim access or, or the longer-term access, depending on how long it will be before the city is prepared to construct the road. Because this is just a small portion of southeast fortieth, you know, it could be the frontage versus, you know, and it could be part of a, a larger project that comes along in the future.
Okay, so this is the, pertains to the block three portion of this.
Right. North, north frontage, yeah.
So.
Which is on that.
Right, it's there from there.
So it's an improvement for what they have, but we're not, it's not all this, it's just this part here.
Correct, all the, all the interior lot streets on blocks one and two, that will be city standards.
Okay, I know.
Herb gutter sidewalk asphalt, oh, nine yards, sorry, didn't mention that.
Question, I mean, there's a, there's some separate detention from the normal flow path through, across this property. In other words, are they, I mean, this normally is virtual floodplain, and they're drilling it across the back of it. And is that the detention pond, or is there a separate detention pond then to flow the drainage?
I don't want to, I might defer to the engineer for just the details of the.
Okay, we can wait for that, that's fine.
Right.
Uh. And, uh. Those are, of course, I wrote down here, and I.
What is the width for these entrances to highway nine? You know, one of them's going to Harvey, but I can't tell what that says, is that a three-lane?
The cross-section in the lower left, as you mentioned, I'm not recalling right now. Those are the cross-sections for the collector class.
So, on, are you talking about Kinderport that was next on highway nine?
Yeah.
So that's the collector, so it's got a sixty-foot right away and a thirty-two-foot roadway that'll all be thoroughly better.
Not even be wider than that.
Is it a little bit wider, is that what I was thinking it might be?
They had some, uh, they only stated like thirty-six and a half or thirty-eight, uh, depending on which class, which, um, cross-section.
Well, everyone's not near that with, no, but.
It doesn't exist, man.
So they're building, so you can see just on these two lots here, where Kendrick comes up.
Oh, okay, here, over here.
Yeah, so that's not included in part of the plat because it was done through a warranty block.
That's a where the Brahms and the.
The Brahms, that's going to be a road that's going to be constructed.
Okay.
And they are, they are in the process right now constructing that so they can have access to the Brahms and Taco Bell in the very near future.
Well, that's already existing.
Right, well, it's being constructed right now, but I think you're, I think you're right, uh, you said it was a little bit wider than that, um. Thirty-six point eight, okay.
Three lanes.
That's all the way through, all the way back to both that?
It transitions, so there is two, two sections that they're proposing that, that transition, uh, right after that first, um, reverse curve. I think it's wider on Blair and, uh, forty-second is wider than it is in this.
And it drops down to thirty-six. Which is our standard for the collector.
Right here.
So thirty-six.
So many lines here, I can't show up.
Yeah, under that, that first portion.
Mm-hmm.
Which is not part of that, this plat.
Very, it looks like it's back to curve, the back curves, that would be a three, one, but, right?
She tried to put.
From each curve, right?
And the existing roadway that actually joins mine, that this ties into, you know, if that's provided to be a three-lane, have a turn lane in it.
The, the Blair Street that connects into Harvey or, or Kendrick?
That, where, where.
Oh, right there?
Yeah.
Um.
Yeah.
Thank you.
No, I just want to make sure we've got ability to turn in and out of there, that area is crazy right now, it's supposed to get more congested.
I think that's all.
Ready before they get applicants.
Yep. John, you know?
Very good, good evening. I'm John Boltie, uh, with Small Arrow Engineering, uh, design firm, project. Been working with the Atkins for many years, I mean, yeah, several, more than one, it's been at least a couple. Uh, pretty complex site, obviously, as you're all are aware of, so we've got a lot of, uh, factors and issues to consider, and we've been through several iterations, and now we feel like we have a pretty good product presented to you for approval, so we can proceed to the next step. Um, you want to go to the next slide, I'll kind of, you know, it's just kind of want to talk about kind of some impacts. And we'll get into some of the weeds on some of the drainage questions, some of the wetland questions. And we'll get into some of the weeds on some of the drainage questions, some of the wetland questions, the foot question and so forth. As, as we're looking at this again, we have a three, three blocks set up, so again, blocks one and two, in essence, is all combined together. It's the park that's immediately behind Loves and that's has our, what I'll call a, a loop road access through there. We have the Kendrick Court access, but then it loops around through forty-second street, back out on the Blair, which reconnects into Harvey and actually feeds to the traffic signal, the new traffic signal that's been put in place. So the way we've got this kind of separated is we've even done some logical separation of uses in blocks one and two. More so from the western portion and the eastern portion. So western portion, that access that comes in off of Kendrick, which is a three lane access. So we've intentionally built a three lane wide typical to the back of the Bronx property, because we know what a traffic generator they have. And so we intentionally wanted to be able to have with third lane access in and out of there. Past Bronx and Taco Bell, then what we do is we width transition when we get into the actual development, back to the standard typical for the city, which is actually, it's a thirty-two, thirty-two foot face of curb to face of curb. Okay, so it gives you a solid two lanes, or if someone's parked on one side of the street, two vehicles can pass. Okay. So we have more of what I'll call lighter duty or lower traffic level commercial usages along the western side is what we propose. We've laid out restaurants, which we've got to have a doughnut shop. You know, general store, you know, something along the line of a DG. And then probably back in the cul-de-sac is basically where we've kind of located cigar lounge, liquor store bar, you know, sports bar, those type of activities are at the end of the road. So then, and then we, as we transition over to the eastern side, we then are looking at more office space, potentially bank space. You know, we show a law office, those type of professional offices and services. And then we feel like probably a good spot for hotel. So we've got a lot that we've designated for a hotel for folks there as well. Then as we get over to the Blair Lane side and the east side of block one and two. That's kind of geared towards serving the current truck traffic. So we've got all the truck traffic coming in out of Loves. And so the things we're looking at that they lack there is we don't have a truck wash, we don't have anything for truck repair, we don't have anything for parts. So we're trying to accommodate all those uses there along the eastern side with proposed truck wash. I'm, I'm from Joplin, so I stuck a chrome shop in there, if you're all familiar with the Chrome Shop mafia. So that's from Joplin, so you need accessories for your semi. Truck repair, obviously, everybody's going to break down, they need help. And then, and then we again, we kind of transition to an auto body repair shop and into a traditional tonne car wash. Or light duty. So again, the whole notion of segregating that traffic is trucks need to come and go through the traffic lot. We don't want them over on Kendrick Court, that's, that's just for deliveries. And folks will figure it out real quick when they go to Bronx and they realize, geez, I can't get out because of the traffic that I'm nine. They're going to go around the block and they're going to work their way around and come out through the light. So everything kind of takes care of itself, the way it's, the way it's arranged. So block three is its own animal, it's in the back. So it's totally separated from the wetland area, its access is truly only from Harvey and on fortieth. So all the folks that are back in here now doing, you know, concrete work and heavy trucks and all that sort of activity, we kept that in the back. And so again, having the gravel back there is kind of logical thing to do for improvement. If you try to do that, well, we've tried to do asphalt on how they're back there, you see that they're like, it's, it doesn't hold up. So that's a whole nother discussion about street project and how do you want to do those improvements? I think our focus is going to be blocks one and two, we know eventually something will happen in block three, we don't necessarily have immediate plans for block three. That's more of a down the road site, as far as what we see happening. Obviously, as you all know, this is probably your highest traffic location in town. I, I, you know, you've got I forty-four on this end, now you get to butt I thirty-five. It's kind of a nice gateway to the city, a lot of people probably don't even realize Newcastle's, they're over there, which is kind of neat. And then obviously, as this starts to develop, you guys finally get to benefit from some sales tax revenue. So we see it as a real beneficial project for the city. Let's go to the next one here. So let's talk a little more about drainage, storm sewers, the experience that we've asked about, sounds like it's kind of coming out of the blue. The way we got it designed right now, and this is mainly focusing on blocks one and two. We have three storm sewer systems that we're going to need to design, basically a western system that collects runoff along Kendrick. Eastern system that collects runoff from Blair, and then there's one in the middle that's kind of collecting runoff from the backside of Loves. And again, all of this is headed north into the, into the wetland area. What we've done is we, we're going to install a short berm along the east property line there of the wetland area to basically create a detention basin. And so we only have to, really we only have to stack the water up about another foot. And by doing that, that accounts for all of our fully developed space in the development, and we have the spread to accommodate that. And then we just have a small outlet structure in the berm that we're going to gradually reduce that. And it'll move out slowly, and that's part of the challenge here is it's real flat, we're in the floodplain. We generally have half percent slopes on our streets, you know, minimal grades on the streets, half percent slopes typically in our storm sewer systems. And then they're discharging in a submerged, submerged basis into the standing water that's already there. When we do the counts for using RCP versus N twelve poly pipe, the man's coefficient is not quite the same, they're close, they're not quite the same. It's like, it's like point one three for concrete, point one two for poly, you're like, well, okay, it's only a hundred difference, so the difference is that much. Well, when you run the numbers, it makes a difference. And so what's happening in this little depiction here is showing, when we look at our hydraulic grade line and we run it for the poly. Basically during our design storm, the stormwater stays inside, the storm sewer system stays below grade and it doesn't surcharge in the street. And it works its way to the pond, to the wetland. If we go to the same size RCP pipe, you know, if it's a twenty-four versus a twenty-four, well, now what's happening to us is we're having a surcharge to where now that water's trying to stack up inside that inlet. And it's not draining away as effectively, so what does that mean? We have to go to the next size, bigger RCP, well, we've already got trouble trying to get cover over the pipe. And then we happen to go to a larger pipe to accomplish the same amount of runoff performance. So by going to poly and then by actually encasing it with flowable fill, well, then that keeps the poly in the ground because we know we have shallow groundwater here, so we don't want it floating out on us. So it keeps it in the ground and then allows us to maintain our drainage characteristics that we want. So this is a more efficient solution. Now, we have already installed RCP at the beginning of the storm sewer system, so the storm sewer system that's going in for Bronx and for Taco Bell is already RCP to meet the current requirement, because it's not part of the plat. And then it actually discharges into an open ditch there that's going to flow along the east side of Kendrick and it'll work its way north to the, to the basin. But where we're getting in trouble is our interior system and then our system over on the east side, it blows up on us if we try to use RCP. And we have to, the other unique thing we've got going on here, we've got the Conoco Phillips pipeline that cruises right up through there, kind of cuts us in two. So basically, we have to segregate everything on the east side of the development of Blair, we have to keep it over on that side of the pipeline and then this storm sewer over on this side of the pipeline. So the only thing that'll cross underneath Conoco Phillips is two lines, the water main and the future sewer main, that's it. And we've got approval for that. And then we have approval also from them to put in an entrance across their pipeline into the lot that shows the future car wash. So in case anyone asks you that's, why are they asking for this? Okay, well, that's what's going on, not that we have to use poly, I mean, we've used RCP on projects as well, it's just in this situation, doesn't work for us. I think, you have next one.
Before you go on.
Yes, sir.
The drainage from the Bronx and the Taco Bell that goes into the ditch, that'll stay a ditch outward.
Yeah.
You won't incorporate into your.
Yeah, we're going to have an open ditch.
Storm system.
Yeah, and their runoff has already been accounted for in our detention. So we provided them with detention as part of our project for their lots. And then, yeah, the ditch remains open to flow on up there into the channel. We'll have some corrugated metal, just traditional tin horn culverts underneath forty-second street to convey that stormwater through there. We were able to just use corrugated and those worked for us okay. But it wasn't really feasible to close up that whole ditch, it just worked better as an open channel to get the runoff to convey.
Just jumping around on you a little bit, but your forty-second street is in a collector's street width also.
Yes, everything, once you get inside the development, it's all the thirty-two foot face of curb, face of curb. Now again, when we take off on Blair off of Harvey, okay, the entrance that ODOT left us and stubbed into the property is a little bit wider. So we matched it and then we held that into our first entrance into the lots. And then again, you can see we did a width transition, once we get into there, then we transition back to the thirty-two foot. And then also what, what's going on here is we have the Conoco Phillips pipeline easement. And so we're able to build up against the east face of their easement width with our curb and the sidewalk section and so forth. So we just kind of, kind of squeezed everything in there to where Conoco still has their full corridor and they have their full access to their pipeline. Plus they've got a little valve station there that again, we left intact. It's in between our, what we show is our truck repair and our auto body shop, we have left an access corridor where they can still get to their equipment. So it's either a pipeline or an oil well or a gas well or a gathering line, it's in your freaking life, so. So this gets a little more into the floodplain discussion, I mean, this whole area, well, there's a line through here, ninety-five percent of this site is in the FEMA map, hundred year floodplain. Loves is actually in it. Taco Bell's out of it, they're out of it, Bronx's majority of it is out of it, so they're, they're fine dry, the rest of us are in it. So what do we do about that? So basically, we worked with WSB, if you're engineering, and we did a full flesh HECRAAS model. Basically, we looked at the FEMA data and we concluded they actually were probably about six to nine inches too low with their mapped elevations that they were calling out, they were not correct. And so once we went through the process, we determined, okay, really flood stages are maybe six to nine inches taller than even we think they are. So we all agreed that this is actually the correct elevation that everything should be to. And then we then use that to establish, well, what's the base flood elevation? Every one of these little building pad sites for all of our lots, then we've established what minimum elevation that that building pad need to be at, to be one foot above our newly computed flood stage. So then the other kicker is we have to look at backwater effect, what is, you know, we're going to dredge out the wetland, it's going to get larger and get deeper. And we'll use the material out of the wetland space to build up the building pad, so then what does that do on backwater? Well, we ran the before and after and that's what these pictures are showing, basically they're like the same. We ended up with that much, one point two inches. That's the backwater effect. And then, you know, they allow you to have a foot, which sounds like a lie, but you know, we're at one inch. So it worked out pretty good, it actually did. And so that's just, if anyone asks you about floodplain and all those sorts of things, that's what's going on. And so we feel really comfortable that everything's going to work and perform, you know, the way it's supposed to, for this type of location. What do we got next? Oh yes, so the wetland itself, we went through a, basically a study with the Corps. And so they basically did a wetland determination for us to look at that current waterway through there. And then basically they sent back a map to us and they denoted, they said. What are we going to do with it? Well, we need to enhance it because it's, it's there, we don't want a mosquito nest. So we're looking at, you know, more of the native grasses around it, we're going to put some aerators in there. So what the aerator does is basically it keeps the water from going stagnant and it makes it become aquatic. And we're going to be quite a bit deeper in some areas because of our dredging. So we'll be over eight foot deep, which is generally kind of the rule of thumb for aquatic activity in a pond. And so that's some of the things we're trying to accomplish with that. Plus, I mean, the folks that are back here at the back on the cul-de-sac, you know, our cigar lounge, kind of one of the goals was from an aesthetic standpoint to have something, you know, sit there and look at on the patio. And so that's, we're trying to make, take advantage of what we have here. We know it's common area that needs to be set aside and it needs to be properly managed and maintained, so that's kind of hopefully the result it's going to do. And that'll happen from day one, because again, all this material is going to come out to help get our lots ready for sale, because we've got to get our lots built up to the correct elevations, so we have viable building paths for these types. And then when that's done, we have more excavation to do in block three in the back. Because those lots, probably just a small area of those two lots, actually will get built up above flood stage where there would actually be an office or a building. The rest of it's down in the floodplain. Because if they're just going to have, you know, concrete blocks or materials or, you know, we show over here, maybe we got bricks or stones or pavers, that type of stuff stored out there. Well, with the floods, it's not going to really hurt anything, you know, it's just going to get washed off. So that's kind of the strategy of, well, how do we make use of, you know, the area in fortieth, because it's, we're getting close to the floodway, we're not in it. But the floodway is not too far from us, so that's where, you know, we are just trying to strategically do a couple little pads back in there. It'll be above flood stage, the rest is going to be, you know, down in it, so to speak. That over there? Yes, there we go. So hopefully I've answered some questions you were wondering about with that discussion. If there's anything else that's popping in your head, let me know.
Well, the discharge out of your detention area. We've had real good luck with predicted drainage under the interstate with prior attempts to improve that area. If it backs up, how will that affect your detention area?
They need to maintain it, keep beaver dams up, that's the answer. That's what slows it down. So, I mean, our, it's, it's very flat, it does eventually drain away. Again, like I was saying, our detention volume is backing it up a foot. And so it's just simply laying that one foot to slowly drain back away. But yeah, it's, so one needs to have a conversation with ODOT about their structure, if they've been, you know, reworked and redone with the new interchange. But they need to be aware that from a maintenance standpoint, and you keep that front third out. Because otherwise it's, they're putting a ban on it. And I know we've got beaver dam issues in there, that type of thing, which, you know, that's fine, they need to move over here and move into our wetland instead. Go upstream, so, but that's, that's the answer. And then once you do underneath I thirty-five. And then, once you get underneath by thirty-five, if you follow that stream, it's another half a mile before it actually gets to the river. So, it takes.
That's where, that's where part of the real problem was, I believe.
Yeah, it just takes a sweet time to get out of there. So, it's almost like, you know, I don't know what all the property owners we have over there, but it's like the whole thing, you know, kind of make sure we have a clear pathway for this thing to drain off.
Right. Well, and I understand you don't have control of that. I was just concerned with when that backs up.
Right.
If it does, if this round isn't better than before.
'Cause this.
What it's gonna do to your lots there and you've got, uh, I guess, just, just to put a three board there that.
Right. Well, it can back up a little more. So, but what we've done is we've designed the burn along the east side to have what we call emergency spillway. So, once it gets up to a certain level, then it's gonna start going over the burn. And it'll still continue to work its way downstream.
Flood gone down the way is dreadful for the lots.
Right, 'cause we, we have to convey what's coming at us from the northwest. But at the same time, we have to slow it down enough to account for what our, you know, new impervious areas adds to the volume. And so, that's the way it's been designed. So. Then this gets into, what do we do about Forty Street? Well, what do we do about Harvey to get to Forty Street? I'm certain you've been over there after it rains. You ain't going down through there. Well, if your truck's fine, if you want. But, you know, there's lots of issues here that need to be worked out that kind of go beyond our side.
Right, there's some infrastructure.
We're a, uh, we're, we're kind of a victim here. But, again, we feel really good about our internal access. You know, the signal at Harvey, having full access at Kendrick. Everybody can come and go and, you know, from a drainage and rainfall standpoint, this area will take care of itself and, you know, we're not gonna contribute to or have any more issues, you know, with what's going on with Harvey. And that's kind of why we've left Forty Street till later. That's not really our priority. We did wanna rezone it because we realized all the zoning doesn't really accommodate what they're doing across the street right now. So, we wanted that to be consistent. Clear as mud, right?
Yeah.
That's good stuff.
Actually, it's a little bragger than that.
Yeah.
Designed in Tri-City twenty years ago.
Well, you know, I ain't happy unless I got a little big problem to solve. That's just the way it goes. Thank you.
You can leave a comment on this application.
I know who says not to do a full Mary cloud. That will be like when they come in, they're applying a cloud. I think they were just making note that at Scrabble, if they come in and they find a cloud, that block three, they realize that they're gonna have to come in and put that inch and a half down to just temporarily include it in front of their crunch. Uh, and then longer term plan, I mean, we want to know. City's been trying to deal with the Harvey and we'll wait until ODOT finish their stuff.
Right.
And see what, since I know that they've done a lot, I know that the city manager is, um, diligently trying to work with ODOT a long time about the beaver scale. We've been talking about that for a long time. The city has staff has gone in, streets department, they've gone in and cleared it out. But now, that was something that we've done in discussions with this new interchange with ODOT. So, hopefully, their work will, well, bring the, you know, take care of that. And then, it's gonna just be a maintenance thing, you know? I'm like, John, that ODOT's gonna have to keep that, keep that clean down. I know I went into the drainage a little bit inside Forty, but, yeah.
Well, the, I mean, just general observation, I don't think it's a total problem. Beaver dams over there, it's just, they could, the design wasn't flowing enough.
A lot of it's just flat, just where it says it.
Yeah. And so, hopefully, this recommendation's gonna be better for it.
I think what I would approve is that variance, um, that they asked for. And since it's stated in the staff report, if you want to approve that in the motion.
That's the H.
HDBE pipe.
At this time, I'll make a motion that we recommend moving one of the plats and the variance to utilize HDBE pipe for the drainage system.
Good.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify with your first hand. Be unanimously approved. Thank you. Appreciate it. Everything else is easier, guys.
Item number twelve. Public hearing to consider an application for an amendment to the twenty forty future land use map of suburban residential district to a state residential district from Matthew Hauser and Angel Hauser, husband and wife, located in the northwest quarter, northwest quarter, southeast quarter, in the west half of the northeast quarter, of the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter, Section sixteen, township nine north, range four west, Van Den Meridian, Clean County, Oklahoma. Property address is nineteen fifty Northwest Eighth Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is reference to our twenty twenty five dash zero, um, three.
It has been official.
Everybody else is laughing, I was just trying to.
I don't look up when they're around, I know people are gonna laugh.
I'll be presenting item twelve and thirteen as companion items. Item twelve is the land use and thirteen is the rezoning. So, I'll make the one presentation in both of these items, so definitely. This is a request for a Newcastle twenty forty future land use amendment in suburban residential to state residential, um, and the rezoning as well from E one, the state residential district to a general agriculture district. For the land use and the rezoning, first we have to through the land use. Um, as you can see, and I'll point out on the, uh, the right-hand side of your screens, the map, it's in the orange and yellow. Uh, the, um, current future land use is suburban residential. Um, the requirement would be to go to a state residential. As you can see, we did a land use and rezoning for the northeast, um, on Eighth Street, approximately about a year ago. Um, both of these parcels were fifteen acres at the end of the cul-de-sac, um, and zoned the, um, E one. And the applicant has come forward and says they would like to use it as agriculture land and it has the fifteen acres beyond the minimum five acre requirement. We see that that's appropriate in that area. There is also adjuvative around it. And they can build a barn prior to having to build a, uh, their single family dwelling. So, that's the basis of the land use for this portion. I didn't know if you'd like to go ahead and go through and then we can, after you read the item thirteen, then we can move on to the zoning. Is that how we've done that before, Captain?
We can't do that right there.
I just, yeah, make two motions. Yep. Yep. So, this portion is for first, the land use amendment to state residential.
Is there any public comment on this application? Same time will proceed. Anybody have any questions to do? Make a motion that we recommend approval of the amendment of land use map to. A state, or to, to state residential. Got a motion, second all favor. Be unanimously passed. Item number thirteen is a companion to the previous application. If the address be nineteen fifty Northwest Eighth Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is, again, reference to our twenty twenty five dash zero one three. And it is, uh, the zone changed still with the land use.
Rezoning from E one, the state residential district to a general agriculture, agriculture district for the fifteen acres. The land use that depends before the.
Oh, the land use.
Yeah, so we just go with land use.
Is there any public comment on this application? Make a motion that we recommend approval of the rezoning. Sorry. Our motion and a second, all in favor. Be unanimously approved. Item fourteen is a public hearing to consider an application for rezoning from E three agriculture, state residential district and agriculture to E three residential state district for Hidden Haven Homes LLC, located in the south half of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section seven, Township eight north, range three west of Van Den Meridian, Clean County, Oklahoma. Property address is forty one oh one South Pennsylvania Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is our twenty twenty five dash zero one four.
Uh, the applicant, Hidden Haven Homes LLC, is requesting a rezoning from a dual zone lot, has E three and Ag on it. Um, and they are requesting to go to the E three residential state district. These are one acre lots. So, what happened was they did a rezoning, um, it was approved by council. Um, and this is approximately about twenty fifteen. Um, was approved, they didn't come into the lot split until about twenty twenty. When they did the lot split, they took in an additional about fifteen feet on the rear of the properties, as you can see, the surrounding, the surrounding zoning. You can tell in the back of these lots, there's a portion that's zoned Ag. And this cannot per, approve building permits with dual zoning gives miscommunication and two different zoning classifications on one lot. Um, and so, we are bringing this, uh, in different form with the E three zoning for the whole lot will be zoned E three. As you can see on the surrounding land use, there's large lot, state, um, single family dwellings in this area. That's what they're proposing for this lot. There is not a future land use, uh, map amendment required. It is suburban residential, fits within the E three designation. Staff recommends approval of our twenty twenty five dash zero one four. And not be given any questions?
How does that fifteen feet?
So, they did the rezoning prior to doing the lot split. So, they have the property owner at forty two twenty three, I believe initially. We'll go back and look, staff did research. That is the property owner that rezoned the frontage along Pennsylvania. But when they did it based on a legal description, they rezoned that portion. But when they came in about five years later and did the lot split, the survey took in an additional fifteen feet.
Those all fifteen feet.
Yes, it was all, so you have, that's how you ended up with the two zonings, which is the property being Ag zoned and the front being E three.
All three of those lots.
All three of those lots are exactly the same. So, the next application I was gonna mention they have to go through and the next application is exactly the same. So, the property owner purchased both of these lots and they worked with staff to, to come in for the rezoning so that they can get their building from there and get zoning continuity on those lots. So, the, so the whole entire lot will be zoned E three.
So, it's either the surveyor or the attorney, but, but this is a cleanup.
I'd go with attorney, but.
The applicant is here, we have an individual question.
On what size?
One acre. So, E three requires, um, the twenty seven thousand three feet and both of these blocks are all one acre.
So, they zoned them, they were not, I mean, they're an acre now.
Yeah, they're an acre before. They, well, when they rezoned, they rezoned.
Could get a little more out.
Well, they rezoned based on a legal description. But you see the, the outline of the E three?
Right.
Okay? They rezoned that as one feet. There weren't these initial locks until after they came in for the lot split. So, they rezoned.
So, when they, they did, they bet on the five eighths acre when they did it first instead of an acre. Okay. Okay.
Is there any public comment on this application? I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the rezoning to E three residential state district. Sorry. Motion, second all favor. Be unanimously approved. Item number fifteen. Public hearing to consider an application for rezoning from E three and agriculture to E three residential state district for Hidden Haven Homes LLC, located in the south half of the northeast quarter, northeast quarter of Section seven, Township eight north, range three west of Van Den Meridian, Clean County, Oklahoma. Property address is forty fifty nine South Pennsylvania Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is our twenty twenty five zero fifteen.
Uh, this application is similar to the previous application, our twenty, our twenty twenty five dash zero one four. This application being dash zero one five is the exact same as last. Same, uh, property owner, exact same as last.
Any question? Any public comment on this application? None will proceed.
Make a motion.
In a second. All in favor. Be unanimously approved.
But we're not fixing forty one twenty nine?
Uh, the applicant has not come forward. Whoever, that property owner has not come forward.
Remember that, we're gonna do the same thing.
It's probably gonna happen soon, she said.
Turn the back. You've let them know?
Yeah. We're gonna negotiate them more, more lot.
Oh, okay.
Item sixteen is a public hearing to consider an application for rezoning from I R restricted light manufacturing and warehouse district to I H two heavy industrial district for D O and properties LLC. They're very own located at lots fourteen, fifteen, sixteen of Section two, Township eight north, range three west of Van Den Meridian and the west half of Section two, Township eight north, range three west of Van Den Meridian, Clean County, Oklahoma. Property address is thirty nine seventy six South Harvey Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma. This is our twenty twenty five dash zero one six.
Is this where they're doing the verwork already? This?
Yes.
Okay. I drove down, I thought that's where they installed it.
Good evening, Julia Yun, our planner. Uh, the applicant is requesting to rezon this approximately two hundred and forty-six acres highlighted in that red and blue here. Um, um, it's located at thirty nine seventy six South Harvey Street, uh, from restricted light manufacturing and warehouse district to heavy industry district to allow operation of a concrete dash plant. Uh, the property is currently used for sand mining, which has operated since twenty eleven. Uh, the property is currently used for sand mining, which has operated since twenty eleven. Under a previously approved use permitted on review. Uh, the proposed rezoning and new U P O R will bring the existing use into compliance. And expansion to include concrete and precast manufacturing. So um, this is like, I guess the tone we use is the companion items. Item sixteen is the rezoning of that two hundred and forty nine, forty six acres uh to heavy industry. And the second portion of this presentation is the uh U P O R uh to allow a concrete batch plant. So um. I guess I'll finish my presentation and then you take votes for two separate items, right? Thank you. Uh, the uh new operate, operation will occupy roughly three acres, which is located southwest corner of that uh large lot. Um, uh, for the concrete batch plant, material storage and the precast uh lay down area. A new fifty by two hundred foot building is proposed. In addition to the existing office structure, that's about fifteen hundred square foot. Uh, also, the applicant has requested the three um uh deviations uh for the building and the. Some of the zoning requirements uh with the U P O R. One is the facade deviation to allow a metal facade instead of eighty percent naturally. The request is based on consistency with nearby industrial buildings. Uh, limited visibility from public streets. And the nature of the site as an industrial operation without uh public, much public traffic. Uh, second um uh request is waiver of landscaping requirements. Due to having trouble traffic does and the poor conditions for plant survival. As well as consistency with the largely un- landscaped industrial corridor. And the third um request is waiver of paving requirements for loading and access areas. Since both Harvey Street and Southeast Forty Street are gravel. And the surrounding industrial sites also use gravel purposes. Uh, staff finds that the request is consistent with the surrounding industrial uses. Which include other concrete and asphalt batch plants. And that not anticipates any negative impact on adjacent properties. Uh, staff recommends approval of the rezoning. And the associated U P O R for operation of the concrete batch plant. Including the required, requested facade landscaping and paving waivers. And uh, we have uh someone representing this property uh is here. Or any question? Uh, would you go to the next slide so I can um. So uh, the red area is still that two hundred and forty six acres. The blue box is the uh U P O R requested area. And at the northern portion that is already uh being used as sand mining. Approximately eleven acres or so, that was already approved back in twenty eleven, so it's been. Continuing with that activity. And uh, so we are rezoning the entire two hundred and forty six acres. And asking for U P O R just for that corner. Which is uh north, the little triangle part, northern point six seven acres is uh for the concrete, concrete batch plant. And uh, a material storage area. And then the south of that is green patch area is precast concrete plant and lay down area. And that is where that um uh fifty by two hundred square foot of uh metal building is proposed. And go to the next one thing. So uh, it's a little close up uh on that uh concrete batch plant, that's the building. And uh, west of it is the uh safe deposit. One detail. And on that, well, the. Harvey does not really extend all the way. And he's um proposing the loading area to be on that side. And uh, the north of the building is that um. Storage. Area for the concrete batch plant. So that is the proposed layout of the uh concrete batch plant.
I have a question, I know it's probably gonna be in the building permit, that uh building that's fifty by twenty. Since that's all flood plain, is that a storage building or a storage shop or the offices or what is that?
It's, it's just a barn.
Okay, this barn, this is storage.
There is a bathroom in there, but nothing other than that one bathroom.
Okay.
Other existing building?
The new fifty by twen- two hundred.
No, no.
Oh, so the fifty by two hundred, yeah, it's just an open building.
Could you pull up to the.
Yes.
To get your name and.
I, Levi Kell. Uh, that new building, it's just, it's just open barn.
Okay, just for storage vehicles or whatever.
So what we're doing is a precast manufacturing plant. So what we're doing is we're making precast concrete structures like uh manholes, curb inlets, junction boxes. And that's all being made within the building. And then once those structures are able to be moved, we move them out of the building.
So if it gets that in the puzzle, then.
No.
Well, we actually did require uh for them to submit a uh elevation to the city chat. After the building was level is poured and they need to do it one foot above.
Okay.
Base floor elevation.
Okay, so they're.
It's in, yeah.
I knew that'd be in the bill. Is Harvey a section line road?
I don't believe so, it's gotta be forty.
Well, you got Santa Fe.
I'm pretty sure it is.
Oh, no, yeah, Harvey is.
Yeah, Harvey and Santa Fe.
That's right.
According to City G I S.
You're right.
I don't think we can build a loading area or road on top of. Section line easement. I guess it's never been open.
There's not a section line easement on that current spot.
Well, if it's a section line, there's an easement there.
Okay, according to like all the, all the data I was able to pull from everything, I, I couldn't find.
I don't think it's ever been open.
Now it stops there for you.
Uh, and either. Property owner on each side has the right to use it until it's open, so. Uh, and you're just building on your side of it, correct?
Correct.
I bet you can get by with that, and I don't anticipate it as being open. If he'd use me, if he's been tried, he's the property owner and it's never been open. He has full access to it until they do open it, right?
That opening is a little bit. The likelihood of that being open.
Yeah, I think you can take the risk.
Right, the risk. And there's no structure on top of it.
Yeah, I was gonna say, and structure's not a problem.
Well, it really, since it's never been open, I think you can do anything wrong on top of it, this state. But there's technically a state owned easement there.
Yes, yeah, we're, the only improvements that are being done there is just improving the already existing gravel road. There, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking that we talked about that being a roadway or the roadway back before. I don't have any questions. Any public comment on this? I uh. I'll make a motion that we. Recommend approval of the. Let's see, we're done, we're done this. Two states, so. This is rezoning. To IH two heavy industrial district. That's it. All favor. Recommend the rezoning, uh, yeah, rezoning approved unanimously. Item seventeen is public hearing to consider an application for use permitted on review of the own properties LLC, they're in Owens. Use of a precast concrete manufacturing plant. Located at lots fourteen fifteen sixteen of section two township eight north range three west of Van Den Meridian. And the west half of section two township eight north range three west of Van Den Meridian. Property address is thirty nine seventy six South Harvey Avenue, Newcastle, Oklahoma, this is U P O R twenty twenty five dash zero three seven.
Um, I need to say something too, that we need to add here, I'm sorry I missed this one, I went over this item. This doesn't, this special use needs to include the asphalt concrete batch plant. Not the, just the precast concrete. I missed this and it's my fault, the precast concrete manufacturing plant, the reason we're rezoning to IH two. Is to allow heavy manufacturing, that precast manufacturing plant, which that building will be. An outside forged bit, which you can't do in I M one or in the outside restricted. That's the reason for the rezoning. So I think is what we, I, is one of the special use needs to be for, the use permitted on review. Have to be for the concrete asphalt batch plant. So it, it just is in, in the, in the item itself where it says for the use of a precast concrete manufacturing plant. That needs to stay for a. Asphalt. Concrete. Batch plant.
Well, but it ought to include the precast.
The precast construction is a permitted use in the heavy industrial.
Okay.
You can manufacture heavy in IH two. That's my, yeah, I should have, I've caught that. On that, it should say asphalt concrete batch plant. And then IH two doesn't need to state that because it's a permitted use within that. So the rezoning is for the IH two to allow the manufacturing portion. And then the use permitted on review is for the actual asphalt concrete.
Okay, and middle we're gonna do a rest. The solid requirement of yours also.
So the facade requirement comes underneath the U P O R where you can make stipulations. In that, in that special use for the permitted on review, which would be the landscaping waiver. The uh.
Asphalt parking.
Asphalt, they're proposing some, you know, parking things as to be uh paid. But the loading and access, so everything is gravel out there, so a loading and access, any other drive would be gravel. And then the deviation for the make really look. Should be addressed in item seven.
The motion vote sixteen was fine.
Correct, correct, because they rezoned it to the IH two, that's allowed, and I apologize, I did not see that. That was not the manufacturing plant, which the U P O R is the asphalt concrete batch. Yes.
Well, now, is it?
The deviation.
Is this just a concrete plant or is it also a asphalt plant?
Just concrete.
The way that our uh use permitted on review.
It's the way it's wrote.
It's the, the way it's written, so I kind of get stickler, yeah, it's, it just covers it, it's in the actual ordinance. It says U P O R, it says. Yeah, asphalt concrete batch plant, so that's why we, we state it that way, because that's what's made it in the ordinance. And it covers.
I think the ordinance is intent is, you may have, you can prove one or the other.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, and if you wanna say just for, they're just gonna do.
Sometimes you don't want that asphalt plant or the concrete plant. You ever wanna do a asphalt plant there?
So. Levi Kell, yeah, uh, so the concrete batch plant is to serve for, to make the concrete structures. There's not even gonna be any trucks move into the concrete batch plant. It's a very small one, it's gonna produce close to sixty cubic yards at maximum use. Uh, which would be like having a few trucks a day. So, yeah, it's only gonna be serving our building strictly, so.
But. There any of the comment? I'll make a motion that we recommend approval of the use permitted on review. Item seventeen, including that with a waiver of the. Variation from the landscape requirements. The paid parking requirements as far as number of lots. And the exterior basementary. Requirement in this property in recognition of its remote location. Remote location and the. Struck other structures in the immediate area. Motion second to recommend approval of, pray go, favor, be unanimously approved.
Let me get this straight, so are you making the motion like now this reads or are you changing it?
I changed it.
The concrete asphalt batch plan?
Right.
Okay.
And you can just call it concrete, although it's in there. Written together, but you could just have one. It's a prison concrete.
Okay, then you want me to put to include the precast concrete manufacturing in it? Bring the motion down, along with the, the way it is.
Item number eighteen is discussion possible action on deviation of facade requirements as described in Newcastle Code of Ordinances. Chapter one fifty four point oh one oh one, exterior building material and facade requirements in commercial and industrial zoning districts. A commercial and zoning designations, Snow Enterprises LLC located at thirty five twenty one Northwest Thirty Second Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma.
Hello.
Hello.
Uh, next three items are all for facade deviation. Um, and uh, how can I respond? Uh, this is a request from Snow Enterprises for an exception from the exterior facade requirements. Uh, outlined in chapter one fifty four point one oh one, uh, A one and two of the city code. Uh, just to remind you that uh, these provisions uh regulate exterior building materials. And the facade treatments in commercial zoning districts. Requiring at least eighty percent amazing material such as brick, stone or stucco. On all building deviations that are visible from the streets. Um, this uh property is located at thirty five twenty one, um, Northwest Thirty Second Street. Uh, Snow Enterprises purchased the property. Uh, uh. In twenty twenty five, it was originally a part of a larger three point seven five uh acre parcel. Which has since been divided uh to improve the usability and development potential of the commercial area. Uh, the applicant has submitted a building funding application for a new commercial structure. Um, at this time, the, there are no um confirmed tenants, but the building is being uh designed. But the building is being uh, designed to accommodate a range of future commercial uses. That are permitted in this zoning district. The proposed building will uh, feature brick along the front and both sides elevation. Which is front being the downside and the sides are east and west. And the first um, uh, rendering is the front elevation. And uh, the other two identical side elevations and they're going to have brick on those facade. Um. The applicant's justification for this um, uh, north elevation, which is that uh, with four overhead doors. And uh, it's going to have the architectural metal um, sliding on it. And the uh. Well, the justification is that it's not visible from the street, which is Thirty Second Street. And uh, it's um. It would pro- uh, primarily be uh, used by the tenants. Future tenants, that's the main access there for any vehicles, materials or any of that. Um, uh, reasons that they're using those overhead doors for. And um, also it is very limited visibility there because there's another um. Business is being proposed north of that after she divided this three point seven acre lot. And uh, so the. Nature of the business being proposed on the north side is um. Pretty limited access by, I mean, there will be some customers coming in, but um. It's pretty limited and uh, it's not really view, viewable from the big, large street. So um. I'm gonna make space. The city staff reviewed the request and found it to be consistent with the previous facade exceptions approved within. The C C two, uh, which is. Community commercial district, particularly in similar situations where rear facade was not visible from public street. Based on the building's design, um, site orientation and the surrounding land uses. Staff recommends approval of the requested facade material deviation for the rear elevation. And uh, Olivia Snow is here to answer any questions.
Do they have any questions on this?
The item eighteen nineteen face south and I sent twenty faces to the west.
They all fit.
All fit south, so the back building will actually do that.
Well, the back building like his.
Can you step up your room?
He's not here, but his, he's still designing his, his back building, he's just gonna use um. For his office girl to kind of do whatever and they store stuff there, but they don't have customers in now. I don't have who.
We do.
Architecture plan?
Yeah, we do. Uh, Janay, did you go to item twenty? So that's the lot north of, yeah, yeah. So the southern lot is this lot that we're discussing right now.
Right.
Right, and then that's the north lot and that is uh, just approximately. Side plan proposed, but it's not final. Janay asked me to include a side plan, so that's what I captured. And the next one is the uh, uh, rendering, so that's the uh. Yeah, that's the north, uh, would you go to?
That's Jeremiah's.
Yeah, no, the next one.
Because the front of this building.
Right, so that's the front that you would see, well, not really visible from. Thirty second either, but that's what the, that's uh, south.
That's, but when it says front, that's his, that's Jeremiah's south wall.
South elevation, that's facing Olivia's building.
I didn't see the distance between the back of. Olivia's building and his front, about how far is that?
It's on that side plane of mine. I think I have. Forty. Okay, this right here, this right here is like forty five feet from the back of my building, the concrete.
Sorry. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I have to do that. Okay, this is forty five feet and then fifteen and fifteen, so that's another thirty. And then he has eighteen feet, twenty six feet, eighteen feet, five feet.
That's our parking.
Yeah. So it's, do you wanna do me? How to do something?
Yes, is the nine eleven. Collision behind it?
It is, can we go back to where she has like the?
Should be to the left.
Yes, yes, yeah, so he is.
Oh, this is, this is still, okay.
This is the fireworks, yeah.
This is where the fireworks used to be, and this is the collision.
Yeah.
Who's all completely metal. And then.
Fountain up there?
Yeah, that was.
Yeah, that's the fountain right there. And then I have this one and this one, the two frontages, and then he has this one. Um. Yes, but on like. Kind of on like how that one is where it shows the, the box around it.
Right.
It's a little deceiving, but technically this property line is like up here. I have a bigger portion. Cause. That's what's, is kind of showing that his property starts here at the front of the collision. This is. But I have a bigger portion than he has the smaller, I think I have one.
I know, show.
He has one and a half acre and I have the rest, almost two. Yeah.
This is. This is also in the overlay district.
I assume, but I'm not sure. Did it go?
Don't leave that portion in the dogger yet, huh?
I don't think it did go.
That how we, let me have to think.
Yeah. Because we, when, on nine eleven collision.
It is.
Uh, has an exemption as to the, his backdrop. Uh.
The collision person, are you talking about the guy directly to the?
West.
Yeah, he's a hundred percent metal.
I couldn't remember if he had the saw on himself.
No, no, nobody.
He was in existence when we did this.
Yes, I think he must have been.
So the.
And what we chipped down was, what we tore down was like this was a metal building. It was a hundred percent metal, and then this was a house, but the house was. Yeah, the house was gutted on the inside, like even the two by four, the roof, it was open. It was just, I'm surprised people, it was, hadn't been used in a long time.
But we'll say with the overlay, since we updated the C C two uh, masonry requirement. It's more stringent than the overlay district.
Yes.
Because it speaks only to the front and anything viewable from the street.
Yeah.
Where our C C two requirement requires the eighty percent on.
We are meeting the overlay district.
Yeah, yeah, and, and accessible.
Yeah, but C C two is stricter than overlay, which I agree on that if we're like. Say, you know, you're in the Walmart area and you're gonna have traffic go behind, our problem is two things. On rental buildings, which is what I have, you have tenants that come in and out all the time and because of. Fire code, sometimes getting them an exit door or that's something like that. We rearranged the back of the building a lot, um, moving electric meters, heat and air units, um, panels. Gas coming in and out or even an exit door. Over time, the brick looks really bad. When you move an exterior door that's in brick from one location to another or someone gets a bigger heat and air unit. Or something like that, whereas when it's metal, they can replace a three piece, three foot wide piece of metal and it's brand new all the time. But when you get too many people doing that over years, also we have a lot of overhead doors on the back. This building's pretty tall. I think it's sixteen feet tall at the shortest. So then what we run into is when we have an overhead door and I think those are twenty feet wide, eighteen or, they're pretty wide. When we get them that wide and that tall, we have the lintel supporting the weight of that much brick above it. Um, the lintel gets pretty big and then, you know, metal buildings tweak and the overhead doors open, so the brick that's above all those overhead doors. It, it just starts cracking at the top corners. So if we weren't rearranging stuff, but um, there's four overhead doors and two walk doors on the back that you'll see. If we can go to the back one, if you'll show it. Right there, so the four overhead doors, the two walk doors. And then between the walk door and the end of the building where you see the gutter. That of course has the heat and air units and gas meters and stuff coming in. And then between the four doors, they're in the center, that has um, like a C T box, C T can on the building and then two meters. So it's kind of covered up.
Industrial anyway.
It's industrial looking with meters and stuff anyways, but what happens when that C T can and those meters get rearranged? Every time a tenant comes and goes, O E C pops a new hole in the brick and repair it. Cause if it's rented to one person, they want one electric service. But if, there's two front doors, so if it's rented to two people, they want O E C to tie that back together. Same thing with the gas lines. Um, they'll put closing, if it's rented to one person, they're gonna rearrange the back to have one gas bill. When it's to two people, then they use, utilize both of the gas feeds that we have coming out and they poke another hole in the brick. Um. I'm finding it right, just, it makes, long term, it makes, it doesn't make the building look any different to me in the beginning, but long term it holds up a little better.
Well, I don't, I don't see any problem with the back. We, we've commented that over here on, on.
We also, I wrapped the building on the side, so the front's brick, the two sides are brick. And then we wrapped that brick around the back about a foot and a half, so it's, it looks a little bit more finished, I guess. Um. It gives us more of the water seal too, but that way, you know, really don't realize it's not brick unless you drive back there. If you drive back there, you're going to the back of my building or the back of Jeremiah, which he clearly doesn't care because he's wanting to do the same. He actually wanted to be a hundred percent metal, um, so I know he didn't mind, he didn't mind looking at metal.
Uh. Any questions?
Yep.
I'll make a motion that we recommend deviation though, or do we do?
Um, because you make a recommendation.
We make a, I recommend, make a motion, we recommend approval of the deviation of facade requirements. Three.
Sir.
Have a motion second, all favor, unanimously approved. Item number nineteen, is discussion possible action on deviation of facade requirements as described in Newcastle Code of Ordinances. Chapter one fifty four point oh, one oh one, exterior building material and facade requirements in commercial and industrial zoning districts. A commercial zoning designation one for Snow Enterprises LLC located at thirty four seventy three Northwest Thirty Second Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma.
Basically same thing before, right?
Do you want to hear discussion?
No.
I mean, it's the same.
The same thing.
Yeah, they're.
Julia, that, it'd be the same description, right?
Yes, it is. However, this might be a little bit easier. Because of, yeah.
If you give me a minute, it won't be any easier. I make a motion.
I'll second that.
I make a motion second, all favor. Unanimously approved. Item twenty, is discussion on possible action on deviation of facade building requirements as described in Newcastle Code of Ordinances. Chapter one fifty four point one oh one, exterior building materials and facade requirements. In commercial and industrial zoning districts, a commercial zoning designation to one River Venge Street LLC located at. Thirty five twenty three Northwest Thirty Second Street, Newcastle, Oklahoma.
I just make sure, what I wanted to say is just put a rear elevation, just putting through that, the deviation is.
Just the same thing, because I don't have the paperwork on there.
Um, yes, they're all.
I know, I have twenty, but it's not in the.
Something happened?
It's not in the packet?
Well, I told you, I had a hard time with Lamar landing thing, that's uh, putting it on the drop box.
Maybe it is, maybe it is, I'm sorry.
Cause I looked at it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
Look at it, it's there.
We're blanking first, something else. Isn't it there?
I see.
Now you went on it.
I don't know it now.
I looked through that, I, I did, I did, and it was there. Getting the, getting the Lamar landing thing to load on the drop box thing, so.
It is, my bad.
It's for the rear elevations only for each one of these.
Yeah.
That one's Jeremiah's.
This is Jeremiah's.
Is that the granite one?
Yeah.
Yes.
But it won't be, he's not moving his granite shop here, but it is the same guy.
That lot, thirty five twenty three.
Well, I was wondering on that one, considering he faces. Sheet metal and sheet metal's beside him and hides him from the highway, who would care on this?
Well, the person to the left of him is. Industry. And like I said, his, his property is actually a little further back than what that red square is showing. Quite a bit, actually. Um, I am in front of him. I'm, I don't mind, I mean, I normally do, I don't mind if his. My building's large.
And I understand that, and I just need them to add in just the whole idea of the C C two, because you might sell your property. You don't mind personally, but the whole idea, I mean, I have to look at what.
If he sells it, if he ever sells his, I'm gonna buy it.
Yeah.
But I'm, but I'm never selling mine.
Well, I, I mean, the thing is.
His is a small building, actually, it's a, it's a small footprint, it's maybe, do we know, Julia, his square footage?
I do not.
His is a small building, mine is twelve thou, I have two twelve thousand square footers in the front.
Well, I was just looking at the fact, when we, when you look at the fact, the only thing he's gonna be able to see. Is the back of your building. Now, the front of his building is gonna look at the back of your building.
Yeah.
Whether he's. Got. Brick facade doesn't really make much difference. Uh.
I, I, I don't mind either way. He, he essentially wanted to brick the front of his, which I guess we would call the highway side. And he wanted to like windcoat the two sides. Maybe three, whatever that.
That'd be better than I was thinking.
Three or four feet up.
But he's not requesting that, I'm not reading him.
Well, he did try to request that, but he was told he couldn't. Because.
His building'd be worth more if he didn't. I mean, it'd be better, it'd be sell, resell better.
If it's, if it's got facade brick on it.
No, yeah, if it's got brick on it.
I think his overhead doors, Julia, do you remember? His, he was trying to do what I was doing. He, he's got his overhead door on the side, he was trying to.
Proposes one overhead door on the back side.
On the, on the west.
North. Well, would you go back?
He's got two on one side, wouldn't be west.
That one.
Yeah, there he is.
Yeah, yeah. That's north.
That's north, yeah.
And then the, with the two overhead doors, that's.
Let's just, I'll be quiet and grant the deviation as he's thinking and get that line for it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would recommend, make a motion that we recommend approval of the building material and facade deviation. For the applicant's. Application. Have a motion second, all favor, unanimously approved. Make sure you like to.
Yeah. All in favor?
Unanimously approved.